I want to welcome you back again for our second vision team meeting. I wasn't sure if you guys were just really enthused about visioning or the free pizza, what got everybody here, but happy to see all of your faces again and a few new faces. Who wasn't here the last time? There's a few. Okay, what, I think, just to facilitate introductions and get this group working together, we'll go ahead and do some quick introductions. So just share your name and what organization you're with. So I'm Sarah, and since you saw me last, I got married, so I had to do that last day. So it's Sarah Wilson, and I work for J. Robertson and Company, or J. Rome Co., and I'm serving as your project manager for the Imagine Lincoln City project.
Congratulations. Thank you. I'm Mary Jo Curlin with American North Lincoln Hospital.
Roger Robertson kind of retired. I'm not doing really well at that point.
Nick LeFol, Lincoln City Public Schools.
I'm Vicki Price with the Lincoln City Cultural Center and the Public Guard Committee.
Ron Chandler with the city.
Elizabeth Reyes with Family Promise of Lincoln County.
Rob Gibson, May Area Merchants Association.
Laura Jo Hugh with the Nelska Family Association.
Judy Sprague with Lincoln City Parks and Recreation.
Stuart Brandon with the Public Affairs Department.
Dave Price, Oregon Cuts Community College.
Keith Killian, Lincoln City Police.
Vicki Manessis, Oceana Family Literacy.
Heather Herzick, Parks Board, and I'm standing in for Todd Richardson.
Steve Griffiths, the planning commission.
Hannah Cohen, planning commission and project management chief.
Sarah, I've got a lot of small business owners.
Richard Townsend, land director.
Wonderful, and we've got some folks in the audience tonight, since it's not a big group, you guys want to go ahead and introduce yourselves well.
Kathy Ware from the Palisades Tando complex.
Cindy Forst from the Palisades Public Council.
I feel there are two of us.
I'm Miles Schlesinger, Lincoln City Planning Commission Director.
Johan, city resident.
Dan Henshaw, city council.
Gomri Nakas, senior planner.
Judy Kasper, city council.
And, oh, we're here. Well, thank you, everyone, for being here and joining us. We've got some exciting stuff to share, some work ahead, so also excited to share some of those events that we have coming up here, including the open house. So we're going to share a few outreach updates with you. We closed our online survey on Thursday, or I guess late Wednesday night, and of last week, and received quite a few responses, so we're going to talk about some of that. We're going to talk about the next step in our outreach and distilling down some of these ideas into a community vision, and then opened up for Q and A. So just to kind of reorient everyone with the schedule that we're on, so we started working on this with the project management team back in May, wrapped up our first phase of public involvement here at the end of October. Now we're really digging into the vision development over these next few months and hoping to have a draft vision to the council, probably be January, just with all the holidays coming up and the thousand, almost 2,000 ideas that we've got to go through, so talk more about that in a minute. So just a quick update of where we are. This is just a list of some of the activities that we've done to date, and just, I don't expect you all to do that math, but that is over 1,000 people that we've reached so far through the online survey, through the eBlast, the INTERCEPT surveys that we've conducted, the meetings that we've attended. We've done radio interviews and have had some press coverage as well, which is great. I don't have any way of capturing exactly how many people we've reached through those outlets. I just included our Facebook likes up here, but I'll eventually export some more analytics from social media of the thousands of people that we've reached through there as well, because we've run some various ad campaigns, so that number's actually quite a bit higher. But it's over 1,000 people so far, which for a community of this size, I feel really good about the outreach that we've conducted. As far as the comments that we've received, so through the online survey and the INTERCEPT surveys, we've had almost 1,700 comments, so it's a lot. Granted, there are a lot of duplicates and a lot of people advocating for similar things, but going through all of that, I feel like I may be cross-eyed tonight, because I've just been looking at spreadsheets upon spreadsheets upon spreadsheets and trying to go through and categorize those and distill it down into something to share with you tonight. We are seeing some themes that are emerging, so these are the areas of how we've categorized the items, the various ideas that have come through, and there's some overlap in these categories. There may be an idea that ends up in one category that could actually fit in multiple categories, but just for the sake of trying to begin organizing all this information, this is how they're laying out. So activities and attractions for all ages. This includes things such as community events, dining options, basically anything related to food and fun, falls under the activities and attractions for all ages. Places to gather, various activities that people would like to see. Enhancing mobility, this category is related to anything, traffic, transit, bikes, pedestrian connections. Environmental sustainability, so anything related, any ideas that we heard related to cleaning up the environment or access to natural areas, policies that protect the environment, that fell into that category. Community health and safety, so some of the ideas you'll see in here are related to just general public safety, policing, traffic enforcement, or in some instances, there were some ideas around bike or cyclists, rules, traffic rules related to cyclists. Anything related to services for the homeless population or programs, and a few ideas that we've received around hospitals and the healthcare system. Economic opportunity, so in this category, the ideas related to jobs and wealth creation, affordable housing, tourism. Education and learning, that one's pretty straightforward, so anything related to school facilities or programs. Arts and culture, another one that's fairly straightforward. Some communities will categorize this under activities and attractions for all ages, but it felt like there was a significant amount of comments under that that could be categorized under arts and culture, so I gave it its own for now, and we can talk about how you guys would like to organize that later, but it seemed to make sense to give it its own. Sense of place and community identity. So this one is when people share very general comments about like a downtown city center, or how they'd like to see a town square, or how they want to preserve that small-town feel of Lincoln City, but they still want it to be progressive, and they want to balance the needs of the residents that live here full-time with the tourism culture. And so ideas and comments related to that go under the sense of place and community identity. Other things that fall under that are also like volunteer opportunities. We had several comments and ideas around volunteer opportunities, so stuff like that fits under community identity. And then quality community services. So the ideas in this category relate to services provided by the city primarily, or their partners. So any new facilities, like new parking, bathrooms, park improvements, things of that nature will fall under quality community services. Any questions about that? All right, so that's high-level, what you're going to see. So let's talk about the INTERCEPT survey results. So while I talk through this, I'm going to go ahead and pass around, so what I have summarized for you tonight are the ideas from the INTERCEPT survey results. I'm poring through the online survey results, and we'll have those to you, we'll definitely have them before the open house, because we need those for our outreach materials, but I just want to take some and pass those around. These are the INTERCEPT survey results, and so I think you could probably expect these idea lists to double in size under each category. I think that you will see the numbers behind it, so the way they're organized, it's by category. I numbered each one in case anybody wants to reference them in conversation. And then after the idea is listed, there might be a number in parentheses, so that is the number of times that I saw that idea show up, just in the INTERCEPT surveys. So it kind of just helps to keep track of everything and account for all of the ideas and comments.
Did you say that's the part of the parentheses, that's the number?
Uh-huh, the number of times that it came up. So for example, you could go to enhancing mobility, and there's one about fixing traffic and congestion that came up 48 times, just in the INTERCEPT survey, so that was a frequent comment. So as far as the number of surveys, so we went out to the farmer's market in July, we were at the Chowder Brew Fest, the St. Castle Contest, and the Senior Fair. The Senior Fair, we had a slightly different outreach approach for that event, but overall, we talked to almost 200 people. As far as the respondents we heard from, from these INTERCEPT surveys, so 40, and this does not include those that we talked to at the Senior Fair. The Senior Fair, the reason we kind of separate that out is we had an activity for them to add comments on this postcard activity, but then we also were directing them to take the online survey, and it was in a paper format, but all of that got entered into the online survey, so those results are counted there. So as far as the other events that we were at, we talked to 49 full-time residents, only nine of those people were part-time residents, and 72 visitors. So the INTERCEPT surveys are basically a great way to get out in the community and reach the people who are visiting in Lincoln City over the summer. So we heard quite a few more visitors. So those, these comments represent a lot of, a lot of those visitor comments, so especially when I think about the things we heard related to parking and traffic, we were just talking to people that had just come off the street, who had sat in traffic and then tried to park their car at a community event, so it's not surprising to me that we heard a significant amount of comments related to those two things. So you guys can flip through these, we'll talk more about the primary results here on those in a minute, but I want to shift over to the online survey results. So we had, well, we did an eBlast again last week, and I know that some of you all helped to share that as well. We had it posted on social media, and that really, that last day really gave us another 100 responses, which was awesome. So we had 300, no, almost 400 people go to take the survey, and actually 376 people completed it. For a community of this size, I just feel like you should all give yourselves a round of applause, that is a great return rate. And, I mean, Hillsboro and Beaverton, where we've done this, they have quite a few, but their community's up 100,000. And we did this in Twolletan, and I don't even think that we cracked 200, and they're a community of 27,000 people. So kudos to Lincoln City, people care and want to share their thoughts, and maybe they just wanted to win $100, but whatever, it works. We do have an award at the prize, I'm going to send all the names to staff, and they're going to do a random drawing to select our gift card prize winner. But 376 surveys completed, so over 1,100 open-ended comments received, and we're currently sorting those. This is just, we had some questions on there related to how being in Lincoln City makes you feel. Over 60% felt happy and relaxed. We had, and I know last time this came up about, well, these are all very positive things. There are some negative comments in the other, the write-in, so there's a list of those, and we can look through that and think about how some of the things that maybe don't make people feel so great, how we can leverage that, those comments into some of the actions that will develop. I would describe Lincoln City as, I mean, people love the natural beauty here, and that comes out when we look through the lengthy survey responses, that people just elaborate on why they like being here, and it's a beautiful place, and they love being at the coast, and there's friendly people. So while it got a lot of marks in a lot of areas, as far as being beautiful and relaxing and that coastal environment with just friendly, welcoming people, you guys have got it going on. All right, as far as what factors lead you to live or vacation here, again, people mention the natural beauty, outdoor recreational activities, people are just so excited about the opportunity to have both the ocean as well as the lake, and all of the hiking opportunities, right? You don't have to go anywhere else, and that's unique for some of the coastal communities. Not every, not every community on the Oregon coast can brag about having all of that right here in Lincoln City.
Can you go back? I don't know, how they're far right there, it's in different colors. Is that significant?
There were three other option fields that people could fill in, so some people chose to just write one other reason, and then other people chose to write all three, so it gives a couple. Yes, good question. That looks just really strange and cold-blooded. Okay, so as far as who we heard from in the online survey, so slightly different group of folks here. The majority of them, over 60%, or actually, it's about 70%, being those that live here year-round, and then about, I think it's 14%, I should have put the numbers on here, of people who live here part-time, or over 20%, actually about 30% of people who work here, not as many on the visitor's side, and then the other, the write-ins, there's a variety of responses there, so I wouldn't pay too much attention to that column, because it's not, there's not a significant amount either way. Helps to kind of search through those more. And then as far as men versus women, so this is kind of interesting, 75% of our respondents were female. Women like to tell you what they think, usually not shy about sharing their things, but still 25% male. So this is all interesting information, because we'll get to the overview of Lincoln City here in a minute, and it kind of talks about who we've reached so far and maybe who we still have needs to reach. We have a little bit of work left to do. So looking at race and ethnicity, so 90, almost 95% of our respondents were white, and then the Hispanic portion, we have 2.4% of our respondents. And how that compares to the demographics in Lincoln City is 13, over 13% of the population here is Hispanic, so we still have a little bit of work to do in engaging those folks. And then the other one, the American Indian or Alaskan Native category, so 2.4% were close there, 3.5% is the population that is represented here in Lincoln City, and so we do a little more work in that area, it's going to get a few more responses there. As far as the age ranges, I think being at the Senior Fair and having 40 people fill, or I think it may have been over 50 that day, fill out that survey, we definitely have, but granted, there are a lot of, a lot of people in those age cohorts that live here in Lincoln City, but it's a little bit heavily weighted on those in the category of 65, I'm sorry, 45 to 64. We've got a fairly high percentage there, where that's a little bit over-representative of the population here in Lincoln City. So we have a, the 35 to 44 group, we could do a little more work to reach that age range, and the under 18.
Did you see significant differences in their answers and their comments based on the ages?
I have.
For example, are the interests of the 55-year-olds much different than the 35-year-olds in their comments?
I mean, there's definitely some trends when it comes to traffic and amenities, and I think one of the best comments somebody ever told me in when I've been doing public outreach, they're like, what's good for seniors is good for everybody, right? We have good pedestrian connections. And so comments like that, I think you kind of see across the board, but there's definitely some variation when you break it down and look at, like, I can just tell you from, anecdotally, from talking to people at the farmer's market, I can think of a couple of young parents who came up, and their first comment was, there's nothing for my young kids to do here until they're like in junior high. Why can't we have more indoor activities for young kids to do? So you're not going to hear that as much from the other, the older age cohorts. But we can separate it out and do some more, some more digging on that if you're interested. Okay, so Phase Two Outreach, to which audiences do we still need to reach? So there's still an opportunity to try and engage those, those part-time residents, the 25 to 44 age cohort, and then youth. So we've talked about hosting a youth focus group, and that's still on the agenda to do that, so I think that will be very helpful to gather some more youth insights, especially around those questions or the ideas where we need more stuff for kids to do, and you kind of want to hear directly from kids, well, if you are going to have more stuff to do, what might that look like? And then we're outreach to the Hispanic population. So some things that we have planned for this Phase Two of outreach are the community open house coming up November 14th, we're going to talk about that. The focus groups that I mentioned, we've got two slated, the second one we haven't fully defined yet, but we know one of those we would like to be for the youth population. If there's any community groups that are getting together, there's an opportunity to share, there's going to be, if they can't come to the open house, we have flyers and anything that you would need, talking points to make sure and share information about the upcoming open house, but if they can't make it there, we're going to put together a brief priority survey, where people will be able to go online, and they won't be able to share as many open-ended responses, but they'll be able to look at the ideas that have already been submitted and share how they might prioritize those, and then they can submit like another idea if there's something on there that's not represented. We're going to do some interviews with a few community leaders. We're going to continue to send out a few more eBlasts. Now we have quite a contact list put together, and so that's been helpful. I think we did a push last week to get some more people to take the survey and got quite a jump in responses, so we'll keep using those to advertise, and as well as social media and the news outlets, so both sending news releases and getting on the radio. I think we used to do our radio interview last week, so we have another one scheduled for, until December. Can you tell me when the priorities survey will be available? We will make that available the same, we will go live with that the same time we do, or on the 14th. And so we'll put together a news release once that's ready to go as well. It'll coincide with what we're doing at the open house. How long will that be live or active? We haven't set an end date on it yet, I need to circle back with our project team, but likely through November, and then we'll have to close it out. But more, we'll discuss that and just send an update out when we have some more concrete information on the close date.
So this, I've worked for a couple of different media outlets in Lincoln City, and so it's an interest in mine, but you're doing a rare thing, you're doing primary research in Lincoln City, and that doesn't happen all that often. And I wonder if it would be valuable for the remaining surveys that have yet to be done, whether that's with eBlasts or encounter surveys or what have you, if we could add a few, maybe even just a couple of questions about where you turn for information, where you get it, because I think it might be helpful as we continue this project out in the future, and the city might just want to know, hey, where are people turning for news nowadays? And that, that might be interesting information, and there's not too many places to turn for that kind of thing here. There's no Arbitron book in Lincoln City or newspaper readership surveys that anyone does outside.
Certainly open to the idea, again, we'll be working with the project team to finalize the survey and get it all put together. Any other questions or reactions to where we're at?
I think that's a really valid point, because just glancing at some of these things on here, they already exist, so obviously people are writing in and saying that that's what they're looking for, that means they're not getting the information that they need.
Yeah, there's, it's a, there are a few comments in there about having a central clearinghouse to get news, and people struggle to find information, so and we heard that on both sides, people who live here as well as people who are visiting.
Excuse me, is there a metric that's going to be attached to finding success? You know, A, B, C, these are value drivers, this is the outcome, so is there anything like that?
Not necessarily. It's because the, or because the comments that are coming in are from these open-ended questions, it's, will have some weight to them, what we have, whatever we pulled from the priority survey, but that is, that's, we should talk about what that looks like at in the end result. Okay, so you're going to have like a list of ideas, you're going to have some supporting information, because you want the idea to be kind of simple in just one line, so that people can read it and understand what's in the vision, but then there'll be some supporting comments that back that up, that provides more descriptions of what that action might be. And then you'll also have, you know, how the community weighed in on its, on what the priority for this action should be. However, that's great to have that information, and I think that that can help organizations who are trying to implement the action, but what it comes down to, so say, for example, the city gets this, this action assigned to them to build this trail, and the trail's going to cost $600,000, and that's not really in the, it was a high priority, and we, you know, people ranked it as their number-one thing. Well, just because that got ranked number-one doesn't mean the city's going to be like, okay, we're going to drop everything we're doing and spend $600,000 to build the trail. It gets on their radar, and then it still has to, you know, get put into a budget. So that's kind of how it comes together, and as far as like this, any value drivers or any additional information beyond that, we're not really collecting that kind of information.
I think we gathered there, it's how you link the data with the research, give the city the value, is what you're saying. So you get some really good inputs, you collect some information, and maybe that $600,000 on the trail might be worth $2 million in terms of driving drivers, and how do you link those? That's where I'm going, how you link that information, critical, value, impacts, community, that's where things, shapes the vision.
I think you probably have to do some more in-depth analysis, that I don't know that it's still just part of this project, but there's certainly, all the raw data will be there, so if, you know, if there's, if there are additional resources or somebody is interested in building into that further, that will all be available. Other questions? I don't know if that was a satisfactory answer, but we can talk more, that's the best I have at the moment.
Are we, is the team doing any attempt to gather information about why some people outside of Lincoln City in the valley choose to go to other beach destinations rather than Lincoln City, have you gotten that kind of data?
Yeah, I'm going to let Richard answer this, because this came up, sorry, this came up at the last meeting, and I know that there's some, there's some other work going on in the community, so I don't know as much about it.
The short answer is no.
The long answer is?
The long answer is maybe. We're exploring the idea a little bit, just trying to figure out how to do it in the costs, so basically you're talking about sending somebody to see if they can be charged for it.
Or doing focus groups in communities like Corvallis or Salem or Lucinda, and say, you know, why do you choose to look for destinations rather than here?
It's not, it's not a simple thing. I know the visitor convention here had done some focus groups here, but again, the question came up then, what about the people that aren't coming here, why they aren't coming? I don't think, I don't think people get it. That was a good answer.
I have a question that might seem obvious, but so you just mentioned that we might decide that we want to do this $600,000 action, but then we have to see what kind of budget they have. Does this project have a budget that we are helping to distribute based on the actions we want to take?
But ultimately, what, this vision will help to guide the comparison plan, which guides the activities that the city takes. Down the road a few steps along is, you know, the guy who will do the private jobs.
And one other thing, so kind of like after the vision, can you just share a little bit of information about how that can work? We don't have anything scoped at this moment, but I'm going to make sure that when the consultants leave and walk away, that you have everything that you need to keep things going, and we're certainly always available to help with anything as needed. But the power of the vision process is the partners coming together, and I think we spent some time talking about this last time. And so that's really where resources begin to be leveraged. So while maybe one organization doesn't have the $600,000 resources to make that happen the next year, there, some interest comes from other, you know, other partners and organizations, and so before you know it, you can collaborate, pull resources, and get things implemented. So that's really, those partnerships are one of the greatest values of doing community Other questions? I want to spend a little bit of time talking about the open house and gather some of your ideas. I want to spend a little bit of time talking about the open house and gather some ideas on that, but I don't want to jump off of this too quickly. All right, well, we can always connect it. So we have the open house coming up on the 14th. I'm going to pass these around. We're hoping that we'll be able to enlist some help for this. And so what we're envisioning, so the purpose of the open house is to provide an overview of the project itself. For some people, this will be their first, their first opportunity to engage with what's happening. And we want to be able to share a snapshot of the ideas submitted. So we'll have crunched through all of those other, all the other data and we'll have a complete list. We want to be able to identify some community priorities for the vision. We want to, we want people to look at those ideas and say, well, that's really interesting, what about this? Or have you thought of that, maybe refine some of the ideas? And then also make sure it like, hey, is there anything else that we missed? What else isn't on this list that should be on the list? We find when people start to look at what other people have already submitted, they're like, you know, they come up with 20 more great things that just haven't been thought of yet. So the way we're hoping to achieve all of those things is to have this open house format that's just, it's very, it's very informal. We'll have a table welcoming all the attendees. We'll provide them, we'll have stations set around that coincide with the, with the various categories. And to help that facilitate their journey through the stations, we'll have a little passport. We'll kind of stick with this travel theme of, as you guys saw the last time, we had the postcard up here, the postcard image. And we'll have little postcard giveaways. But, and you know, imagine you're writing a postcard 20 years from now from Lincoln City. What would that say? That was the activity we did at the senior center. So we'll have that on display again and people can participate, can share their ideas there. But to go along with that travel theme, have a passport where people can stamp their passport at every station to kind of help them get through all of them. And after just take a look, if they don't write ideas down, at least they've checked it out and saw what's up there. And then if they complete their passport or so many areas on their passport, then we'll, people will be entered to win a prize. Because we found that, you know, kind of elegant cards and prizes and food helps to get people out and sharing their input makes it kind of fun. So that's the, that's the format that we're envisioning. We also want it to be something that people feel free to bring their kids to and make it really family-friendly. So we'll also have some fun activities for kids. That postcard I mentioned, we have a blank version of that as a coloring sheet. We'll have some paper up on the walls for kids to draw a mural of what Lincoln City looks like in 20 years. Imagine the future. And what else, what was our other? Oh, and then we had, there was another idea that came up talking about having a pinata or some sort of, you know, high-energy event with candy and sugar involved. But those are just, those are all ideas and I just want to open it up to this group to share any other ideas or what you think would work well in your community. You know your neighbors, you know your friends, you know the people you work with. So what do you think feels authentic to Lincoln City? And how do we get people there and how do we get them engaged? And if you think this all sounds great and you just are really excited about it, who wants to sign up to help lead a station? And if there's, and if there's anything in particular. Okay.
I think I said $200,000.
Cool.
Sorry. I can help with the education and learning opportunities.
Okay.
And I was going to say for kids' activities, we could add a Lego station.
Lego station?
I will temper and volunteer my Lego station.
Awesome.
Sarah, I could help with the environmental sustainability table.
Okay. Activities, Roger?
I can do education and learning with Sarah.
That was Dave. And somebody else said, I heard another me too, Patty.
I'll use that someplace in the community I know.
Okay. Any other volunteers? Put me down for number five on the second. Makes a lot of sense.
So Sarah, I do it a little bit different. I want you to bring this up with everybody.
Okay.
So the city is also doing a branding campaign where we are looking at our logo, our slogans we use, the campaigns we do and so forth. And we had to discuss this with the city council a few weeks ago. And they saw a relationship between what the image campaign is doing and what we're trying to do on a branding campaign. And they said, can these tie together? And so one of the things that we'd like to do is to add one more station. They would have things like logos, brandings and stuff like that that I would man and we'd get input from people there.
Okay.
If you guys are all agreeable with that. We will have, we'll have over the next 10 days, probably about 10 or 12 of these that we'll be hosting. And so we'll, as a matter of fact, that evening, also at the community center, we'll be hosting two of those. They'll last for about an hour and then our plan is to, as soon as they're done, send them over to talk to you guys.
That's great. Because we'll take all their input on everything.
Yeah, each of them will have somewhere between 10 and 12 people involved with it.
Excellent. That's great.
Who are you volunteering for, ma'am?
Me.
And you have whatever materials?
Well, I'll have everything put together.
All right.
I have just one teenager, like a volunteer to help with the activities and attractions for all of the place.
Okay.
I just wanted to make sure she's going to be willing to do the work.
This is your daughter. Awesome.
If she manages to find things to do, she's a young person for this.
It's stupid, Richard.
I can help out with health and safety.
Okay, great, thank you. Anybody else?
Yeah, me over here. She can't see my hands. Well, to either run education and learning opportunities, which I know there are two people, but the other is.
Who else volunteered for that one?
Arts and culture might be the other.
Who do I have for education and learning? I have Sarah and, oh, and Dave, I must, Dave, I accidentally put you up here.
Then I could do a different one if you want.
No, that's great. I just wrote it down in the wrong place. All right, so, so Mickey, I'll put you on arts and culture.
Yeah, and then also in terms of the idea about the pinata.
Yeah.
Some of my students create them.
Oh, really?
So maybe a gift from the Latino community might be providing a pinata for the event.
That would be awesome. What, do you need us to do anything to coordinate that or just?
No, I will check with them first. I think they'll put something together. If you have a theme for it perhaps, create it to look like whatever.
Really? Okay, I'll, I'll follow up with you.
Okay.
Um, any other volunteers for any areas or any areas of particular interest?
Put me down for the arts and culture table.
Okay. I'll be out of town that evening at a conference, but if you're still looking for volunteers for kids' activities, I can take that back to my staff and see if I can get some. Oh, that would be fantastic. Yeah, do you want me to just, yeah, put you on that? Yes, if you would agree. Okay. Thank you. And any other volunteers? That's a great start and we have some, obviously all the rest of the project team will be there as well to engage with people. Any other thoughts on the format or? Okay.
Is there any, any stations?
Is there what?
These stations, what do they look like?
What do they look like? That's a great question. So we will have large poster-sized things, posters put together, that will have the ideas listed. We'll also have a sheet next to them that'll be, you know, big so that people can write all over them. And, and then to supplement that, in case the sheets get full, we'll also have post-its that people can post on top in case they fill up. But people can either, and there'll be some stickers and materials next to each one. And there will be very specific instructions for all the volunteers that night and we'll probably send them out in advance as well so you can take a look. But what you, what you will see when you go up to the station is a brief description of what the category is. You'll see a list of all of the ideas. There'll be some dot stickers or stars or something where if you agree with an idea and you think that's great, you can just put a star next to it. If you don't see an idea up there or you have something you want to add to an idea, you can, if you want to add something, you can use a little post-it and write your thoughts on that. If you have a totally new idea, you can write it up on the sheet and we'll add it to the list. But that's, that's what we'll have for every station. And we'll try to make the posters bright and colorful and make it look fun. Have some balloons and maybe some music, light music playing in the background to just have some good energy and make it, make it a good sign for people. And did you have any other suggestions or, does that sound okay?
Sounds great.
All right, good. Any other thoughts on open house?
I'm doing the morning show on the fly on the radio.
Okay.
Somebody to call me Thursday morning at 7:15, either call me or meet the station. To interview, you just probably have to do one, I don't know, the community center.
So on the, actually on the 14th?
On the 9th.
On the 9th, okay. Thursday, the 9th. Okay, 14th, Tuesday. All right, we can figure that out between the teams. Okay.
I'll ask Richard, like, if he would commit.
Thank you for the opportunity. Other thoughts on promoting this? We're going to do an e-blast, we'll have some posts go up on social media. I know we have some people here who do next door. I can't remember.
I have access.
Do you have access? Can you maybe do a next door post for us?
The other thing is like flyers on the Nelskott Strip go over really well with how many locals and second homeowners frequent that area. So that would be very welcome and I could distribute them if they get to next door.
Okay.
Yeah, Kate, I know.
Or call me, I'll come down to the home, either way.
Anybody who can distribute flyers, we can get you a stack of them. So just let us know what you want and how many and we just have, we can get those to you.
I'm trying to think of some hope that I can give to my 11-year-old son that will make him really, really, really want to go to this because once they start telling each other that the kids come home, like, mom, we gotta go, we gotta go. So I'm trying to think.
So we will have prizes to give away and we haven't named what those are. I don't know if staff had any additional thoughts on that. But I don't, I mean, we gave away, there's a lot of gift cards, I have a feeling there'll be, there could be another gift card in there somewhere.
Maybe send a membership for your good and nice parents.
Yeah.
VCB, I believe, has got a list where they deliver posters and flyers to on a weekly basis.
They do.
And if you embed yourself, they're already documented, call up the doors where posters and flyers can be put up.
None of that, thank you.
Did you send us a digital one already?
I think that's included Kate's email, but we can send it out again as a follow-up to this meeting.
I can send up the Lincoln City's one.
That'd be great, thank you. Would anybody be going to the chamber luncheon and maybe stand up and talk about it?
I'm speaking.
Me. Did we give you some talking points yet for that or do you need any?
If, we do, but just very briefly, mostly to hear in review. But I will talk a little bit about upcoming things, so, yeah.
Okay. Any other things that we could surprise?
I, I have a suggestion.
Yes.
A lot of the way that we reach or I reach the population of people that I'm working with is word of mouth. And so if there was something, I know we have the flyer, but something that personalizes a little more to make people feel that it's really important that they come and share their opinions and their voice, maybe like a pass-it-on little business card kind of thing or something.
Yes.
That we could give out and give enough to give out to others and.
Richard, do we still have some of those business cards last? We do. We have some business cards and then a flyer so you can hand out both. Because the business card just has the like project information on it, but we'll have the flyer as well.
I think that seems to work well. The other is that people, we have some key people with Facebook pages. A lot of times they'll photograph the information and then it gets out there to everybody else who's getting it that way.
Okay, that would be great.
Eating our visitors, our providing snacks for.
We'll have some refreshments. Any other thoughts on prizes on what the community center membership was a really great suggestion? What else is really appealing?
I'm thinking of like a school shorts and towel goggle package. I've got two boys and some right there. I know that's supporting.
Classes, they're kind of like smaller of a membership.
Yes. Kind of tell everybody, can we do these other things?
Okay. Any other tools or things we can provide you guys to help us get the word out? Please let me know, Brad, that all these things that you've already mentioned, we have the resources already available. So we'll follow up and make sure you have what you need. We appreciate your help.
Excuse me, based on your, obviously you're pretty inexperienced, do you have any idea what the turnout might be?
So open houses can be really tricky. It's all, you know, we tried to do it early enough in November that it's not going to interfere with anybody's holiday plans. When people start to smell turkey, they just like don't like to give you any input anymore. So I feel and hopefully the 14th is a good night. And it sounds like there's a lot of other things going on at the community center, which always helps for people to stop in if it just seems like a very fun casual event. I've seen open houses where they put so much work into it and, you know, it's like crickets. But based on the output we've seen so far, or just the outreach, the efforts we've had and people really showing up and sharing their thoughts and being enthusiastic about it, I just don't, I feel pretty confident that that's not going to happen here.
One little thing, with our community center being a block off of the highway, maybe you want someone who's cold tolerant, a team to be out there with a sign.
Okay.
That would be something that would be big for us.
How have open houses gone over here in the past? Any great success stories or? I've never done one here, but I feel like I have all the components, at least for open houses that have been successful in other places, that we are on the right track. But you guys tell me what works in your community.
Very true, one of the best ones in Lincoln City with the groundbreaking, the hospital.
Thank you very much for being back. A little bit different than an open house, but the groundbreaking with the new hospital, we had a great turnout. Because we had perfect weather. Yes, sunny, shiny, very light breeze. It's a beautiful afternoon. Yes, weather always helps.
This will be in the evening from 4:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m., so I don't, I don't know how much that would make a difference for us anyway, but if it's a really stormy, terrible, windy night, I don't know, that, that could deter people from coming out. So.
So will we have use of the lodge gym this open house or will there, is there another activity there we built?
Uh, no, let me look into that.
So we can set up a crazy fun hospital.
Yeah, so not a solid no, I'm sorry. I just don't know if there's.
That would be something, because you're right, the weather might be really horrible, but.
14th is predicted rain three quarters of an inch.
You know, let your kids play indoor for, you know.
We would not be able to reserve the gymnasium when we use it.
So, well, I mean, people say that they want things for kids to do. So I think maybe we'll, in our marketing efforts, try to emphasize that, that there's fun, free stuff, free refreshments, prizes, all of that to try and give people just an opportunity to get their kids out of the house in case they're going stir-crazy. And so maybe that's a good marketing approach.
Also, it's going to be a really interesting environment because I'm sure that there'll be like indoor soccer or some practice happening and it'll be a tough sell to say there's nothing for kids to do in this community when the place is crawling with kids. So it tends to draw a crowd.
They'll bring their trucks.
Yep.
What space will we be in at the community center?
It's a big meeting space. It's got a portion of kitchen. It's a picnic space, it's got a portion kitchen.
Okay.
There's plenty of ones.
Okay. All right. Is it Rockwall night? Is it Wednesday, Rockwall night?
Tuesday.
It's just Tuesday?
No, this is on Tuesday.
So you could, you could, you could send them to do free rock walls?
Roger's pretty good at the rock wall. One time.
I can look at spring bells.
Are you looking for other opportunities to engage people after this?
So after this, we'll have, as I mentioned earlier, an online survey that will be a similar exercise for people to share priorities, add ideas, refine. So we'll be pushing that after the fact.
Biggest gathering, demographic gathering, the people in this community, is at cultural center before the opening of the Christmas season, yeah, Thanksgiving.
What is that?
Whether it's a Christmas tree, and Santa Claus, and all the lights, if there's need for more.
So that's in November? Yes, Thanksgiving weekend. It is Thanksgiving weekend. There would at least be an opportunity, I don't, I live out of town, so I can't commit to helping with that, but if the project team here, if there are some folks that want to volunteer to at least just hand out information and push people to take the survey, there'd be an opportunity for that. I know that there's, our experience at the Sandcastle Festival, well, there were just as many people as there were at the farmer's market, but people with their kids, like, kids are going crazy, and they're excited, they want to get down there, and if that's the case at the holiday event, that can be kind of challenging to have any lengthy conversation, so it's very passive, like, you're gonna be able to share information, but you're gonna have a hard time engaging anybody for any length of time, because kids will have candy canes and hot cocoa, and it's crazy. I'm thinking back to last year, I did, had to do an outreach event in a Christmas tree lighting for a community, and it was just that, it was crazy. But it's a good way to get people just to raise awareness and say, "Take our survey."
On Friday, there's an ornament-making workshop, in which people sit still for a long periods of time.
But that's a good.
That would be a good opportunity.
That would be.
Kids are working, and parents might not be.
To have legs.
Just if they're, most of their kids were, which is nice, but, yeah.
That's that Saturday?
Friday.
Friday.
That sounds like fun.
Would it be possible to hand out flyers at the theater event at the cultural center, for people who attend?
This weekend?
The party this weekend, yeah.
Yeah.
And we will put flyers at the front desk of the community center, on our Facebook page, and if you want to do some digital media on our Jumbotron throughout the next week.
Oh, yeah, we'll see you guys.
What, I'll just call you.
Okay, I'll take.
Yeah.
Give you the instructions.
I forgot to do that. Which I won't have, so I'll have somebody else. Chamber of Commerce, does it try a flyer email blast? A five dollars if a flyer.
Oh, that would be great.
I'm sure you guys could get this in format that you sent to Nick, Heather Appen, Shred Up Winds, and Diane Coos, Lincoln City Outlets, going out in stores at the mall, and all the employees out of Shred Up Winds.
Employees, I'm sorry, what was that?
At Shred Up Winds.
Oh, okay.
And at Lincoln City Outlets.
Does anybody have specific contacts for those places?
At Heather Appen, Shred Up Winds.
Was there a suggestion, like, some videos played?
To have somebody what?
Was there a suggestion that there might be a video played, or videos played?
We have the original video that we put together, and we wanted to do a second one. Let's talk about that. But yes, there could be an opportunity for that. And we could still even play the original one, but we might have an opportunity to update it as well, put some more of this current information on it.
Would you be interested in capturing video of people's comments about Lincoln City?
Yeah, that would be awesome. Is there somebody that will do this stuff?
Well, we, the county funded a little digital studio at College, we could swipe some of the equipment for that evening, and, I mean, borrow some. And set it up, and it's only, it would almost be self-service. We could put it in front of one of these booths, and let people talk about whatever they want to talk about, and then come up together, maybe even some students, and put together a few quick, really short Facebook videos.
And what's really nice about that is after the vision's done, executed, and you're trying to engage people still, and bring in partners, it's really nice to have those videos to kind of help explain it, service promotional materials for the vision.
And on that note, if only someone who was gonna be there ran a very large Facebook community, who might want to do a quick live video from the event to introduce it, that might help drive some people to the door.
Okay.
I don't know who that person might be.
I'll get her.
Okay. Where I was going with the thought process was stimulating the imaginations of people. So when people are coming in, rather than just be flat-footed and say, "Hey, what's your thoughts? How do you get the creative juices going? How do you get the vision process going? How do you get the imaginations working? How do you get people stimulated and engaged in the process?" Things like that, too, to put some life into it. I'm just tossing it out as.
No, I think it's a great, I think it's a great idea. And so what I didn't mention, and maybe this would be a great spot to incorporate some video, so every hour, we'll actually do a welcome, and explain to people what's going on, so we'll kind of make an announcement, and have people's attention for just a few minutes to say what the stations are, and to just give that big project overview, and say a few inspirational words to get people excited about sharing their thoughts. So maybe that's a spot where we can incorporate some video, and try to get people to really think big, and be excited about it. Thinking back on your idea, would be there, is there some examples of other places that have sort of grown, like little communities that have created their own identity that we could maybe look at and see?
Now you're talking, in the sense of, don't get me wrong, you can be right. What has gone on in other parts of North America or the world coastally, that have perhaps gone through a similar process, and have had aha moments in their career, right? Looking into that, you know, sort of thing. Fair point with that.
Yeah, I'm an example person. Okay, I understand what you're saying, but it works. Okay, so-and-so did it, or this town was successful in doing that. They made this to make that. There are a few stories of that, I mean, there's some in Oregon, we can even look beyond Oregon, to just have a few highlights in that brief introduction about what's possible with visioning.
I think one of the things you have to get past in a local culture is there is a nearby of what's the point? So in your value-added messaging, making sure to let people know what the point is. And what is going to be the end result, what's the tangible benefit of them taking their evening to come to this, even if there is prizes and food.
Maybe it may be what you like to help them to craft the vision of Lincoln City by coming, putting your piece of the vision.
Well, and part of that is, I can put together these talking points, and this feedback is really great, because it'll help craft the message, but you guys all have to service the champions of that message, and helping to get it out, and to tell people, the point is, is that you have a chance here to make a difference, and so that's why you need to be here. And yes, here's a few examples of how communities came together, and people came together to make a difference in their community, and it grew from, you know, this small town of, you know, forty thousand people to over a hundred thousand people, although forty thousand people's not small, I should probably think of a different example, but I'm thinking of Hillsborough, when they started their visioning process twenty years ago, and now everything that they do, and their budget, and how they allocate resources, is all tied to what they came up with in their community vision. And all the members of their visioning committee, you know, are from, are all leaders from the community, from nonprofits and business in the city, and the school district, and they come together and have just some things that they've put in place are incredible. And it's, I mean, there's plenty of stories that we could share, just from, from that, from their visioning process of twenty years, and the things that have happened in their community. But we can also, we'll find a few others from outside of Oregon that also might be intriguing and exciting. Other undertones in the community we should be aware of, or should speak to in our messaging. This is good stuff, so it's very helpful. All right, we kind of talked a little bit about this already, but developing the vision, so, well, what comes next, after we gather all this information? We'll be refining those ideas and crafting action statements, and so what you'll see is, you know, maybe there's an action that says, "Expand the farmer's market," but that really came out of thirty different things that people said that go with that. So you'll see one, just short action, but then there will also be supporting documentation for that. So whoever the lead partner, if you guys do the partner recruitment, which is the next phase after you adopt your vision, that lead partner has some background information to use as they help try to bring that action to life. Does that make sense? So you could end up with, I don't know, say a hundred actions, based on all of the ideas that come in to, come in through this process, and get refined down into these one hundred actions. And so then you might recruit, I don't know, thirty partners, say, usually the city gets a substantial amount of things, and the school district usually has a lot of the things that fall under that category of education and learning. So a lot of partners will have more than one action, but they have their action, it's very flexible to implement, based on what their resources are, and because they engage in the process of bringing it to life, that they have all this supporting documentation, as well as how did this, how did this action ever come to be, where did it come from? You have all of that public involvement, and the data that we've gathered to support that, so they know. So that's kind of how it goes from an idea to an action statement to potentially implement We'll have, once we get all those ideas together, we'll have city staff and the community partners review that, to identify any relation to upcoming plans or goals. So you guys do a lot of master planning, most cities do, for their transportation system plans, I know you guys just did a big parks master plan. So what ends up in the vision should not be contrary to what is in those plans, or even if it is, we should have a discussion about that, because I know that all, there's a lot of public involvement that goes into those plans, too, and so we're not trying to just trump that, things should, they should all be flowing together to achieve the vision and the goals for these areas. And then we'll have some information on community priorities, we already talked about this, priorities, it's good information to have, it doesn't necessarily mean that it's gonna happen tomorrow, just that people rank it as number one, because there's always resources required. And then we'll also, through this process, have, talk to a lot of different community partners, and so there will be some partners, like the hospital, for example, if there's some things that come out related to healthcare in the community, obviously we'd want to talk to the hospital about what they can do to be a partner for that, and be identifying those partners as we go. So that's, and that's how the vision will come together at the end, so you guys will have this plan and this document, you'll have a list of people ready to engage to get it rolling, and you'll have people excited to partner with you to help ultimately accomplish the goal. So that is the presentation for today. Seven o'clock, we had, if you guys want, we can have some discussions tonight around the action center on here. I know you just got them today, so you haven't had a chance to read through them in depth, but there's an opportunity now to, if you have additional ideas, we can have some conversation about that, or, or we can wrap it up.
You said mention slogan script, I gave in the student council of high school, the late, and they took the surveys and all that kind of stuff, that I don't hear really going, need with them or at all?
No, I did send a message, and I still haven't heard back about organizing the slogan script, so maybe.
You still want to give it up to high school?
Yes.
Okay. I can email you, I can go try and talk to them, and email you to see if they can want it, if they can.
Yeah, if we could do it in the, like, the next few weeks, that would be ideal.
Another president?
President.
I'll ask them to see if that's a good way to do it, through the ASP?
Okay.
Not them, if you can choose, start reading them in English class or something.
Ten, ten students, ten, I would really, twelve would be, ten to twelve.
Yeah, the ASP's just a, just a obstetric school, so it's not that many kids.
Okay, all right. Yeah, I'm just sort of making sure, walking into a room of thirty, that's a big help.
I'll see if I can set it up so that way, the, it's probably a little bit professional better.
Okay, that's great, thank you. All right, any other comments or questions, or thoughts on these ideas as you look through them?
They're really great, some of them are super simple, you know, like, add a professional team council section, or different categories, that's easy. It's so neat to feel.
And I think once you start reading them, it does, it starts to inspire ideas as well. You think of all sorts of things. And some of the things you go read through, you're like, "Oh, well, that already exists here, we already have that." So then you use that as an opportunity to, you know, maybe this event or this activity needs to be marketed, if people don't know that it already exists here.
But making your brain just a little further, deeper. As you look at this data, you compare it to other communities that you work with, if there's anything that hasn't come up, or if there's some things that are missing, might be suggestions, I think that would be valuable as well.
I think there, you guys, just, I was looking and comparing, as I was categorizing stuff, I was like, "God, where did I put that the last time?" Because the themes that come out are usually very similar. You know, you guys have quite a few more things related to tourism, that's unique to Lincoln City. I think one of the areas that feels a little light to me is the education and learning, and like workforce development stuff, and I think that that's just based on the outreach that we've done so far, we haven't heard, and I don't know, if there's, maybe there's just a lot of retired people who live here, and so those needs don't exist to the same extreme they do in other communities, but that's the only area that I don't feel is as represented, as there may be more needs out there. And I think, again, because of the outreach that we've done so far, and not connecting with all those young families, that maybe we're just not hearing that stuff as much. So that's, I'm really hoping for the open house, that we can hone in on that group, and see what's there. I mean, I certainly can tell you all sorts of actions that have ended up in other people's visions, in those areas, but that doesn't mean it's relevant to the city. Because it's, they're always a little bit unique, there's a lot of similarities, but it's still, so, Richard, that's his part right here. Any other comments or questions about those ideas, and what's coming through? It is, it's probably, for me, I'm a little bit sick of looking at them, because I've been reading spreadsheets for days now, but for you guys, you're getting a first glance, and it is kind of fun to see what comes together. All right. Look, that's it. We have some follow-ups stuff we'll be sending out, and we'll see you all at open house coming up soon. If you think of any other ideas, or anything, or anything else that you need, please get in touch, we have the committee roster, if you go for issue one, that has our raised contact information. contact information. Thank you.
I've got the business cards here, take as many of them.
We'll see. But not the, the.